About meeting order. First item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Representative Franklin, your input.
My second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say aye. Next item is approval of the minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. I make my own decision now.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, public comments. Looks like you might have somebody here that wants to talk. But, uh, please, uh, keep your comments to three minutes. Let everybody have a chance to talk. And state your name. Who's first?
My name is Tom Nelson. I live at one-nine-seven-three-Ancassen Beach Road. Historic facts have concluded that the full-size lithium-ion battery stored together that loses required cooling will overheat, catch fire, and automatically create an explosion to create five-to-eight times volumetric expansion of its own oxygen expansion of shrapnel fragments, which created never-expanding explosion too hot for firefighters to engage. Of approximately twelve-hundred Michigan planned lithium battery storage units to house cooled batteries, at least one will explode. There are three common sense alternatives. First, eliminate any kind of battery storage. Proves harmful to humans, the groundwater and the air we breathe. And instead, use recommended replenishable solar-generated electric power panels installed not on farmland but on Michigan existing commercial structures already pre-wired to the grid, which eliminates the cost and time to rewire Michigan's approximately twelve-hundred townships. Second, replace the fundamental danger of lithium-ion battery storage with common commercial and residential generators with auto-started bottle gas, natural gas, gasoline, or diesel fuel equipped with catalytic converters to safely contain carbon monoxide gas. Scientifically safe, that one has cost. Third, replace lithium battery storage with the same hydroelectric-generated power developed in Germany to power up to twelve homes using nothing more than a flowing stream. If you want to take your phones, you can look up how many flowing streams we have in the state of Michigan. It's a bunch. This small groundbreaking or water breaking generator can easily be enlarged and multiplied with larger generators to supplement clean renewable solar electric power connected to pre-wired commercial and residential sites already along flowing waterways, which reduces or eliminates the need for a petroleum power supply. Business and homeowner installation costs can be credited as operating loss deducted from taxable income in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Anne Raffel. I'm a resident adjacent to the property that's being considered for the battery storage site. I'm not in opposition to the innovation of renewable energy, but I'm here in defense of the public safety, environmental protection, and responsible land use. First, the community safety and emergency preparedness. Lithium-ion battery fires are not ordinary fires. When these facilities experience what's called thermal runaway, they create chemical fires that can burn at thousands of degrees and can reignite days later. These events release toxic gases that can cause severe respiratory injury or even death even after a short exposure time. They release, um, toxic gases. The airborne toxins can contaminate our, the runoff that can seep into the soil and groundwater, and many of us rely on private wells for our drinking water and livestock. I'm curious as to what safeguards are in place to ensure contaminated runoff will not reach the water table? And who is financially responsible if contamination occurs? The company, the landlord, or the taxpayers? Second, the evacuation and blast radius concerns. Documented incidents show these batteries have caused explosions strong enough to damage structures hundreds of yards away. Toxic plume modeling must be provided to show where hazardous gases would travel in under various wind conditions. My question is, where will our families evacuate to? What is the designated emergency response plan, uh, and hazard event form? Third, the economic and property value impact. Dependent studies have shown that industrial energy storage facilities can reduce nearby home values by five to fifteen percent due to perceived safety risks. The proposed site is within proximity to private homes and agricultural land. Will the developer provide a property value protection agreement to compensate residents from declining value directly arbitrated to the project? Fourth, legal and financial accountability. Finding lithium storage facilities are classified as high cancer desecrual operations. Under what federal-state law, facilities handling massive disenergy storage must carry sufficient financial insurance to cover catastrophic failure, cleanup, and long-term remediation. Has a financial bond been secured to guarantee cleanup and decommissioning? What happens if the company is sold, goes bankrupt, or walks away from the site? Our community must not inherit future liabilities. In conclusion, this is not a simple energy project. It's a high-risk industrial facility being placed next to homes, farmland, and families. Until comprehensive independent safety studies are completed, emergency responses, uh, and capabilities are proven, and full liability protection for residents are in place, I ask that the board delay or deny approval of this project. I'm not opposing progress. I'm advocating for responsible planning that protects lives, property, and the long-term health of our community. Thank you.
My name is Deb Shippe. I'm at one-eight-four-six-four South Fisher Lake Road. Good evening. Leonard and I attended the Park Township planning commission meeting this past Monday evening. What I found interesting is Park's overlay area that they picked is eight hundred acres of remote land with no tower available to it. It's basically undesirable for solar or battery storage. Doug Coleman said a company would have to spend a lot of money to bring in power supply to be able to use it for solar or battery storage. This was said a few times to help ease concern so that their overlay may not be of interest to any prospective companies. So my question is, why then is Lockport's overlay of eleven hundred acres of prime farmland with at least three or more substations making it very desirable for a prospective company to want to lease it? And Park did just the opposite. Also, where's the alternative sites? My understanding is there was supposed to be documented alternatives as to why they were not chosen for P A two-three-three Michigan dot doug, section two-two-five, which I believe is the state required. I asked Doug Coleman after the meeting. At first, he said they're in a Lockport meeting minutes. Well, I said I've spent hours looking through past minutes and could not find anything. He replied, oh, no, they're in my notes somewhere. I would just have to find them. Again, my question is, is if you're required by the state to document them, I would think you'd know their location. My other question is, in the master plan of twenty-twenty-four, under future zoning plan under residential, it is stated that the township plans as having to approach upon prime farmland along South Fisher Lake Road because the city is annexing land at a rapid rate. It's also stated in their master plan that the policy is to preserve and protect the farmland and the waterways. This is contrary to what is being done and proposed. If the company was to lease the land for potential use of solar and battery storage, it could and probably would destroy the prime farmland in the designated overlay of eleven hundred acres. These battery storage systems are dangerous and have caught fire across evacuations for miles around and have serious potential to destroy the prime farmland and the environment. In conclusion, if you won't give us more time and table this to evaluate alternative sites that are not prime farmland as in Park's overlay, and I'm just going to pass this on through, then I suggest a stipulation that a motion was made, like Park did, that if P A two-three-three were to be repealed, that the board would also repeal the overlay. Thank you, Deb.
Before we go to the next person, let me, I have to make something perfectly clear. This board is in a five-three board only. We do not make the final decision. What we'll do is we'll send your comments, your questions, and Doug's comments, Patrick's comments onto the township board. But this, this planning commission is a five-three only. Anybody, what other, other ques- uh, speaker?
I guess I'll step up now. Eric Schaefer, one-ninety-five-two-four, Crescent Beach Road. Um, I know a half a dozen of you on this, on the planning committee because I was on it twenty years ago as part of my job being county commissioner. As I remember it, my memory isn't very good anymore, but as I remember it, we all say you, you do have the ability to tell the township board that you're, that's, you're advisory only, but you can advise them that this isn't a thing that they should be doing. Number, that's number two. Number one is, you should be reviewing, correct me if I'm wrong, you should be reviewing the county master plan to see if what's being proposed in Lockport and Park meets the county master plan. I have to tell you, it doesn't. So on page one hundred of your county, of your twenty-twenty-five St. Joseph County master plan, it states that one of Lockport Township's goals is to recognize the importance of our natural features. There are three bodies of surface water adjacent to or less than one mile from the proposed location of the best. Fisher Lake, Portage Lake and its watershed, or the Portage River and its watershed, um, Dan, St. Joseph River and its watershed. These bodies, these water bodies are important natural features, and therefore, the proposed location of the best violates the township's stated goal in the county plan of recognition of our natural features. Secondly, the proposed location is flash flood wash, meaning that it's basically sandy gravel covered by prime farmland soils with a shallow water table of zero to fifteen feet. Again, page one hundred of the twenty-twenty-five county master plan also states that one of the goals of Lockport Township is to preserve and protect groundwater. I have a background in hydrogeology. I know that whatever you put on the ground eventually ends up in the groundwater. I also know how hard and costly it is to clean up groundwater after it's been impacted by any kind of accident resulting in contamination. If an accident occurs, many heavy metals will end up on the ground and then contaminate the groundwater. This, again, proposed location violates the twenty-twenty-five county master plan. Page one hundred of the twenty-twenty-five county master plan also states that one of Lockport's goals is to protect the township's drinking water sources. Now, let's think about this. The only source of water available to the residents surrounding this site, as well as the overall area, is well water. A large portion of this overlay site is located within the groundwater protection zone shown on page twenty-seven of the twenty-twenty-five county master plan. Three, V Rivers' municipal water well number eight is right across the street from this district, from this district. Look, water knows no boundaries. This system has the potential to impact local groundwater and therefore is another violation of the twenty-twenty-five county master plan. I'm moving on to something that actually I'm really floored by. I'm having a really hard time, having been a public servant for going on thirty years, starting with several county, county boards, moving on to county commissioner, and now as a, as a road commissioner. My sentence soon to end, then. I consider one of the most important jobs of being a public servant is to be transparent about the decisions that they make. All right? One of the things I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around is the fact that the township didn't notify the property owners that they were considering their property for this kind of use. We have talked to, we have talked, I should say, you. That's just wrong. It's unconscionate. It absolutely is. It's not being a transparent public servant. So, um, I know that your job is, is to advise. I would urge that you at least table this, um, and, and, you know, send some kind of notice to the township that, well, there are really five minutes to come. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Hey, Walden, living on nine-eight-seven South Fisher Lake Road. Thank you for letting me speak today. My effort to better understand the solar project, I went back and carefully reviewed every set of township planning commission minutes I could find. Goal simple, to see if there were any mention of alternate sites that have ever been investigated. With my ability, I found no evidence that there was any alternative, alternative locations ever discussed or even considered. Lockport Township Board meeting minutes are available from twenty-twelve through twenty-twenty, but there appear to be no minutes on record from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five. The planning commission meeting minutes show this timeline. On October seventh, twenty-twenty-one, the commission decided to hold off on creating guidelines for solar energy until there was more public interest. January sixth, twenty-twenty-two, they decided again to wait and see how Vegas Township handles its regulations. April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, a delay on utility-scale solar powered systems was reviewed and discussed. July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, again, a draft zoning ordinance for solar energy overlay district was presented and verbally updated on the process. October twenty-twenty-two, a motion was made to recommend a tax amendment related to solar energy as outlined in the attached draft. January fifth, twenty-twenty-three, additional cleanup of the solar ordinance plan was discussed. April twenty-twenty-four, the record simply mentions renewed energy with no details. December seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, discussion shifted to the amendments involving battery package facilities. August sixth, twenty-twenty-five, the topic expanded to include both solar and battery systems. October twenty-twenty-five, the proposed battery energy storage system was formally presented. But here's the problem, there's no attached draft in October twenty-twenty-two. Says there was supposed to be one, but there was nothing there. And the overlay map that I referenced later was actually made on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, months before the July fourteenth meeting where Doug presented the project zoning ordinance. How are we supposed to make sense of this? How does anyone make sense of this? We're told that everything we need to know is available online, but when we take time to get through it, we find static notes, missing attachments, timelines that don't add up. We study this. Moving back through every record available, and this, what I just read is the most information we could find on the township website. And frankly, it just doesn't make sense. That's why I'm standing here today, because residents like us are trying to do our part to understand and participate in this process. But it's hard to have trust in a system that doesn't give us clear, complete, or consistent information. We also had several people stop by and contact us about solar energy on our property after twenty-twenty-three, and for a long time, we didn't understand why. It wasn't until we attended the twenty, October second, twenty-twenty-five meeting, that we finally realized what was going to happen. The overlay zone had already been created and passed by twenty-twenty-three. We had no idea. That's not transparency. This isn't about opposing renewable energy, which we don't. It's about making sure this process is handled openly, fairly, and transparent, and that every resident has access to information that actually makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Joe Farr, living at fifty-six-one-sixty Sequel Road. I've lived in Lockport Township my entire life, that's over fifty years, and my family owned the land since eighteen-thirty-five, long before Lockport Township even existed. I'm here tonight to give them deeply frustrated and disappointed by how the proposed battery energy storage project has been handled. From the start, there was no real location for the residents. No mailing, no announcement, not even to the property owners themselves, no effort to reach the people who would be directly affected. The only notice was a tiny posting buried in the back of the newspaper somewhere and a flying memo online about the upcoming meeting to already vote on. The only reason anyone even found out about this was because one of the residents happened to stumble upon it, and they took the time to dive in and find out the information that they could and let everybody know. That's not transparency, that's failure to communicate. When we asked questions in the last meeting, we were told, you should have checked the website, but no one told us that there was anything on the website to look for. Expecting people to accidentally find something this important isn't government. It comes across as sneezy. Then we were told, well, the state of Michigan's going to do this anyway under Bill two-three-three and two-three-five, and that the township needed to pass this, so we might keep some control. But when the residents spoke out against it, the board still voted one-hundred percent in favor, saying it was the only option. Voting for something your community opposes isn't control, compliance. Many of us who were urged even wrote letters to our legislators, and the responses we got back basically, we've been against this from the start, but there's not much we can do. So like I said in the last meeting, it feels like we're shooting a B B gun at gray chain. But even so, we had to stand together and do what we can to protect our township. The proposed site is also environmentally wrong. The lower water table averages about fifteen feet. The site is within one-eighth of a mile from the St. Joseph River, the Portage River, and Fisher Lake. One spill, one fire runoff, and a contamination could reach our wells, farmlands, and waterways. And speaking of farmland, this plan does not respect our prime agricultural land. These fields have supported families here for generations. Turning them into industrial energy storage zones goes against everything the community stands for. There must be a better, safer, and more appropriate place for this kind of product. This cannot be the best choice for Lockport Township. I want to be clear, I'm not attacking the board or anybody on it personally. I genuinely appreciate the time and effort of each and every one of you. I do understand that this was a very tough choice, but the issue is very personal to myself and my family. It affects our way of life, our land, and our environment. And I believe this could have been handled differently with transparency and communication. This isn't just about one project. It's about trust. It's about protecting the land, the water, the community we all built together. Lockport Township belongs to its residents, not to outside interests or quiet decisions made without any real public input. We deserve honesty, openness, and leadership that stands with the people, not for the will of the state. We are the citizens of Lockport Township. We're definitely listening now. Please help us change this. Thank you for your time.
My name is Shippe, one-eight-four-six-four, South Fisher Lake Road. I'm not going to read all the lines just because it'll be duplication of what's already been said. I'm just going to give me a, a second here and I'll figure out what I want to say and not bore you guys. I'm going to talk about a recent fire that happened out in California. And this is a resident who told someone that they, they lived three miles away from the fire. And that was Moss Landing, California. And they felt the particles in the air from the black smoke of lightning and heavy metals. Early tests at Moss Landing, California detected elevated levels of metals including cobalt, nickel, copper, manganese, and soil around the area, area. Please remember that whatever is on or in the soil ends up in the groundwater. Test also detected metals in local drinking water, and the fire at Moss Landing called for the evacuation of fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred people, and others who were farther away were ordered to stay in a home with windows and doors closed for seven days. Those of us living close to the overlay area, including Fisher Lake, where would we go? Where would we go to evacuate? From a personal perspective, how many of you would like to live across the street or nearby from a potential environmental hazard? In closing, let me, let me back up. Deb, my wife and I both have driven around the overlay area, and the number of homes that could be directly, and I say directly affected, is fifty-seven homes, and one business, and one airport. In closing, this is not just a Lockport Township issue. This could impact all of St. Joe County. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Waldorf. I live at nineteen-seven-thirty Crescent Beach Road, ladies and gentlemen. I've got information I've learned more as I've been here. I'd like to share some of the information I've found. Fires of battery energy storage systems are primarily caused by thermal runaway, an unstoppable chain reaction of chemical vents that cause battery cell to rapidly uncontrollably increase in temperature. Causes of these thermal runaways are electrical abuse. Overcharging and charging the battery beyond its specific limits is a major cause of dust fires. Mechanical damage, physical trauma to batteries such as crushing, dropping, puncturing, and compromised structure and causing internal short circuit. Lastly, manufacturing defects. For being in a manufacturing facility, manufacturing defects happen. Laws introduced during manufacturing can create weaknesses in the battery. Common defects include misaligning electrodes, contaminating materials, or problems with internal substrate that keeps the anode and cathode apart. With that, the fire safety considerations, these are very difficult fires to distinguish. Lithium-ion batteries create their own oxygen, which makes them very difficult to put out with traditional methods. First responders are often trained to contain a fire and let it burn out. That's alarming because these emit toxic gases. Dust fire can release toxic chemicals like hydrogen fluoride, carbon monoxide, and hydrogen cyanide, posing a significant hazard to first responders and the surrounding community, which is all of us. With that, I did a little more research to see, is this just fear? But there's been twenty-six fires since twenty-twelve through twenty-twenty-five, just over eight hundred and some of those facilities, that's three-twenty-one percent. That's odd that I'm not interested in living near, and appreciate not having that opportunity to experience that at three percent. The last point I'd like to talk about is looking at the township of Lockport. The ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-one was adopted February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, effective March sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Under section four, article B, there's hereby created a solar overlay district identified as S one, the purpose of which is to facilitate the establishment of utility-scale solar energy collector systems by providing standards for replacement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal consistent with public safety, while minimizing negative impacts on adjacent and area projects, and while promoting the township's goals of preserving agricultural lands and open spaces. Minimizing loss of rural character and open spaces and the desire to preserve farms and agricultural-based activities are strongly supported in the master plan of Lockport Township. To promote the preservation of the township's rural character and agricultural heritage, lands included in the utility-scale solar energy collector systems or layover are limited to portions of the township that may not presently be used for agricultural purposes or production. I'm a quarter mile open south to this, and all I see is agricultural areas. So it seems to be violating what I read as the master plan right here. Lastly, in closing, I don't know what the board can and can't do with recommendations. I'm greatly interested to understand what will sway you guys, one way or another, to either approve the recommendation or reject it. So I hope to be informed with that. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the time.
Hi, Ben Wayne, you're in five-five-five eight-eight Exor Road. You're an advisory board, right? I respect that. Is there anyone in here that can tell me anything positive of the development going forward? Okay, this will remove vote. There's other questions. Is there anyone in here who's for that? Okay. I think that's an important part of adding a voice in this process. When a few years ago, I lost a home to a storm, they rebuilt it, I went to go before it, boards to go through ordinances and everything else. What I can't understand for the life of me, when the people that are in this room, in this community, they chose to live here for a reason, or to be here for a reason, whether it's agriculture, whether they love the farmland, they love the river system or the water, right? They chose to be here. And those laws that you have in place, those zoning laws, right? This is taking something away from the choice that they made. Agricultural land getting turned into industrial land is not okay. Not when there's a kind of risker involved with a project of this magnitude. Historically in this country, we've used eminent domain at times in order to take things that are for the greater good of the people, right? And people get paid for their property and they move on and do whatever. This is not for the greater good of the people of this township. If I were to come to you as an individual homeowner with a small parcel of land that was zoned residential, and I said I want to open up a hot dog stand, you wouldn't laugh me out of the room, right? But now we're talking about eleven-hundred acre parcel of land. People that maybe don't, you know, maybe the landlord is not involved, I don't want to be presumptuous, okay? But now we've got a big project with a lot of money involved, and no transparency in the dealings of it, and we're going to go from agricultural land to industrial land, that is a big, that is a big shock, a big gut punch for the people in this room and for this community. The risks are too great, the changes are too great, it hasn't been handled in a clear way. And again, I, my first question, is there anyone here who can tell me the benefits of this? Is there anyone here who's for it? All right, silence please. But thank you for your time.
I haven't prepared anything, but I just want to give a little background here. My name is Kathleen Standard, and I live at five-six-six-zero-one Franklin Drive, Three Rivers. You're probably all pretty familiar with that location. If you're leaving Three Rivers on one-thirty-one, that long field to your right along the railroad tracks is literally across the street from my house. If you look across that field, you can see my town porch. The only way that I knew anything about any of this is that my neighbor was talking to another neighbor who saw the B.E.S.S. trucks surveying that field. If they had not seen that, we would know nothing about it. That was my first alert. And then I called the township, and I'm like, "What's going on?" And they go, "Well, we don't really know about that particular field because they don't have to necessarily appeal to the township. They can go straight to the state and get information and get permission." And thank God, I pray, that that field has been taken off the list, is what I've heard. But huge amounts of earnest money is paid to these people to set this property up as a potential. And the person who owns that field gets to keep that earnest money now after he's been bribed with a lot of money. But I live outside of Tamarack subdivision. That field would have impacted hundreds of people, hundreds of families. The ground, I was married to a farmer, I know all about farming. I know about the water table, I know about the sand soils, I know about all that stuff. And just the fact that this eyesore, what would it do to my property values? Who would want to live across the street, literally, from this facility? And my husband was doing some research today, and he said, "Just one little thing that they're not even talking about. The thing has a constant buzzing hum." Can you imagine what that would do to your mind, listening to "mrrrrr" all the time, twenty-four-seven? That's just one little factoid. But I find that the lack of transparency about this whole thing, that I only found out because a neighbor saw the field being surveyed, nobody came to my door and said, "Oh, we're considering maybe X, Y, Z." No, nothing. It could have ended up like, I wake up some morning and there it is. It's wrong. It's totally wrong. And this is not the place for something like that to be, not in this county. It is fragile. It is vulnerable. One of the facts that I remember learning as an elementary student, in the state of Michigan, you are nor more than a half a mile from a lake, stream, or river. This is not where you put that kind of stuff. And that's my opinion.
Is there anybody here from Constantine or Lockville Township, sir?
I represent them.
Would you like to say anything?
I think he's got me on the agenda.
All right.
Is there anybody here from the company that's trying to do this?
There is no one.
There is no company. There's no company. So who owns B.E.S.S.? Where would that, where would, where would our, where would this stored energy go to?
Hey, Brad, he'll tell you.
Okay.
I can wait.
Yeah, there we go.
I'm John Steev, car S seventeen eight seventy-four, Lockdive, actually Lockport Township, so resident of the community. And I, it's a sovereign company that's looking at doing this. And so just to set some foundation, Public Act two thirty-three was passed in twenty-twenty-three. It did pass across party lines. Every single Democrat voted in support of it, and every single Republican voted against it. It is part of the Green New Deal type of ideology that Democrats have. It does come with some irony because there's a lot of environmental concerns people in the community have. I understand that sentiment and that irony that some of you probably do see. I do come with three questions that I don't know the answers to, that I would like to share. They're not gotcha questions. When I serve on a committee on corporate subsidies and state investments up in Lansing, sometimes, because I am able to do my homework and have a team that can help me with those things, I am able to ask those gotcha questions, and if you look at that, everyone will be on my committee. It's pretty entertaining sometimes. I was happy to play a key role in the failure of the Goshen B.B. Battery Plant up in the Big Rapids area. Very good news that we just got. Here we have another situation touching much closer to home. I have three questions. One, does the M.P.S.C. give eminent domain powers for the facility? Two, has anyone signed an N.D.A. regarding this? With the other situations local people in the community had, there's issues that some people have regarding transparency, then what tends to happen, as you've seen around the state, whether it was the Louisville Project in Marshall, the Goshen Big Rapids, the Monday mega site, local elected officials sign non-disclosure agreements, they're sworn to secrecy, they bring this in, people don't help the community before it's too late. There's nothing they can do about it. That said, Public Act two thirty-three gave a lot of authority, a lot of power to that state board. And that was not a decision made by your locals here, and it was not a decision made by me. It is great that all of you are here doing great research. I've gotten notes of wanting to continue to talk. I'm looking forward to hearing more of what you guys know because you're bringing me up to speed with some of this going on in the community. So thank you for that. If there have been non-disclosure agreements signed or not on that, if there haven't been, I would like to know what type of corporate giveaways might be involved in this process. Is there a property tax abatement? Are there any types of tax incentives or grants that this facility would be receiving? Because that's the type of things that happen. And what we see is community after community, who fought hardest against the Goshen plant up in Big Rapids? It was Big Rapids who fought the hardest. Who fought the hardest about the corporate giveaways in Marshall? Marshall was the one who fought the hardest. Who fought the hardest up in Monday Township about the Monday mega site? It was the people in the community in Monday. So community after community is standing up and resisting these types of decisions and fighting it and giving it everything that they can. Meanwhile, they are being afforded all kinds of taxpayer-funded handouts to facilitate business growth in their community that they don't want. They're the very ones putting up the biggest fight. And here we are, putting up a fight here with things that you guys don't want to see in our community that would not work out for you. So anyway, I just wanted to share those things. I hope I will give a little bit of context to the situation here. People really say, "Well, I want my legislator to do something with this." I have talked with some of you. I'd like to hear from you guys. I'd like to hear from you guys more. We could pass a bill in the House to reverse Public Act two thirty-three. We could do that. And I would support doing that, but every single Democrat supported it. They have a majority in the Senate. Gretchen Whitaker supported it. She's governor. What path to victory do we have to repeal Public Act two thirty-three? To me, it unfortunately feels hopeless this term. I'm happy to vote yes and bring up a vote in the House. I'd support that. But that's the dynamic at play there. Keep fighting the fight that you are, look into this where you can, and the local decision-making will be a little bit, you guys are doing a good job.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Off to the board and have some talk afterward.
Can I ask him a question, please?
I have a question for you, too.
I'll try to, I'll try to answer.
Will you be at the township board meeting?
I, which one? Which block? On Mondays?
Lockport.
Lockport Township, which Monday?
I'm not sure what it is.
It's the second Monday, I believe.
Second Monday.
So November tenth, you're saying? I could probably be there November tenth. So I'll show up November tenth. I'll put it on my calendar to do that. I'll plan to be there November tenth. If you want to talk to me in the meantime, I know there was one meeting that people tried to invite me to in the past, but it was on a Tuesday night. I'm in the same thing Tuesdays and Thursdays. I literally got to eat six and a half minutes' worth of food today, and that was from about six-thirty-one to six-thirty-seven and a half. At home, my wife cooked me dinner, now I'm here, and that's my license, but that's fine. Tuesdays and Thursdays are busy, but I was able to make it, and I want to continue here for you guys. That's probably your meeting tonight, but talk to me if you guys.
I appreciate you showing up. I want to ask Steve if he supported the House Bill four oh-two-seven and four oh-two-eight. Steve, did you support House Bill four oh-two-seven and four oh-two-eight? And Michigan sponsors seeks to ensure that energy-related decisions are made by local leaders directly accountable to the citizens. That's what that bill was about. Did you support that bill?
I don't know.
Your name was on it.
Did we vote on those bills?
Yeah, they voted, they passed it. It's in the Senate right now.
This term?
Yeah, it was passed in April of two thousand twenty-five.
I'll let you, I'll do those bills. I know I have, but I'll get back to it.
Okay, let's move on. I'm Lester, but I'll speak, and I live at, in Park Township on the lake. But I'm also involved with the family farm. We're in our second generation. That's at one-nine-seven-one-oh. We're close to becoming a centennial. We've got a plan to go into the third generation there. And my concerns are, I went to the Park Township, and I agree, you know, it'd be awful difficult to go up there and put the stuff where they did. Us, I'm not so sure. Our answers we got from the township, not so sure. I just printed this out from the state that gives them guidance. There wasn't any of this stuff discussed. And at the end of the meeting, and I can, and just by looking at this crowd, I can tell you there's probably not one person in here that's in favor of this. If you may, show hands. They did at Lockport. It wasn't very good.
Are you part?
Lockport Township. When they, they did do a show of hands, and they still go through with it. We didn't get our questions answered. Said went online. The online didn't work. My biggest scare is, I'm next to Parks, he's surrounded, and we call him the Harriet Farm. He owns, the biggest percentage of what you guys own here are the eight hundred acres. And talking to Doug, I don't know why we need the eight hundred acres because this, this stuff just doesn't add up, you know? When you, when you talk about the megawatts of the load on this thing, it's forty, fifty acres, you know? So this thing could go anywhere. And I sure don't want to pass this on to our next generation looking at this battery storage across the road from where our farm sits. So, thank you. Say you were to discourage it, and it go against your vote, what does that say?
The final decision is with township board.
I understand.
But they should reflect the citizens.
They should. Do you guys reflect the citizens?
We look at, like Harriet said, does it match the master plan?
No.
If it doesn't, we'll point that out. But that's about the extent of our authority. Advice real.
I got something to say about it, okay?
Yes.
Rick Anderson, planning committee member, I've been on since nineteen ninety-seven, I'm down. Economic Development, Michigan Works, Rick and his best appointed me. We've been working on this the last several months as a board. We've talked about the data centers. We've talked about VAS. I went up and looked at the data center that was up there in Ashmore Township. I've attended the state meetings that we're having here now in the William Township. And it's so overfilled, they canceled it last month and this month, and now they're going to move it to the new auditorium at the Council County Road Commission. And I haven't heard anybody that was for it there in all those surrounding townships. I had to get ahold of the people that were on the Southwest Michigan First, which takes in all the seven counties. I think there are sixty members. I got ahold of some of the CEOs there, the companies. I think they're in Ziegler now, Ziegler go overseas, the president of that. But those people are telling us that, you know, you have to get ready for this because these things are coming, and you've got to have, I think Doug will tell you, you've got to have things in place, a master plan for data centers and VAS, berms, noise control, what they're going to do, closed cooling systems so they don't use so much groundwater. This is a big problem. I'm glad that we were getting educated for this and going to those meetings, and I reported out to the board. And I learned the same thing that you knew when I attended other township meetings. There wasn't one person that came forward that was for this. So you're battling Southwest Michigan First because your job is for always looking for new business. So I think, you know, to control the scale and the size of it because just over, what, last month, they purchased fifty thousand acres. Milan, Michigan, obviously, he knows about that, Tecumseh, Ypsilanti, that's two counties. And it's a global company that is not releasing its name. So their heavy presence here in Michigan, we've got to be ready for them. And we've got to be ready for them at the township level so you have your people that are doing zoning, set up the criteria that you're going to use. That's what I wanted to say about it.
Thank you.
All right, I know that all of you, Gary Sherman, I live at nineteen-five twenty, Lake Shore Drive, and on Fisher Lake and Park Township. I know all you guys are, have other things to do with your life instead of trying to listen to this, but I, I'm not sure, I wonder if anyone from the company that's actually operating this new facility here has approached or been addressed by, and made a presentation to the township board, or certainly not this planning commission, or any of that kind of thing. And I think we, residents of that community, we deserve to have someone face us and explain what's going to happen, how it's going to work, how they're going to accommodate the concerns that we have here, and then decide from there, we don't, we don't know anything, frankly, nothing about what's going to happen over there. My concern really is, it's, it's just down the road, around the corner from where our property is on Lake Shore Drive. And I'm imagining all these solar panels out there at eleven hundred acres. And I'm wondering if the company that's operating this is financially viable, if they have finances to carry this off and sustain it. Because we all know by listening to the news now that grants, tax credits, and all the federal government financing tools are being wiped off the board. They're going to have to justify this project on the basis of. They're going to have to justify this project on the basis of its viability as a pre-standing entity. And my concern is that without federal funds coming in, they're going to have to go to the utility companies and ask for additional money or charge fair prices, and that's going to come right back on us as higher utility rates. And we don't have any feel for that at all. I think we do, we owe more insight than what's going to happen over there than we have now. Thank you.
Jim Farr, again. I just had a question based off of kind of what you were explaining earlier, that nobody was for it. The question that I have is, okay, we're being designated, we have an overlay area of 1100 acres, and if everybody hypothetically in that area says, you know, fine, that's the 1100 acres, but nobody wants it, does it just go away? Or does it go somewhere else in Lockport Township? Or can they actually come in and take any of our property from us if we don't want it?
Can't take our property.
I didn't think they could.
I believe if you're a landowner...
But if that 1100 acres, but we said, okay, here's the overlay, here's where all of that can go, because technically, we're part of that overlay, and we didn't know we were part of the overlay for the solar power, and we've already turned a couple companies away from that, because we didn't want them. Okay, so now it went away, and it's not there. So, if everybody in that 1100 acres says no to it, is this done? We don't have to do this anymore?
Pretty much. If ever, all the landlords said no, it's done.
But we're not having big money.
Yep.
They've graced up, big money. I heard numbers you don't even want here.
That's another issue, I think.
Hi, my name is Alice Anthony. I'm 1870 South Fisher Lake Road. So, it's my understanding that the primary reason for Lockport Planning Commission wanting to pass the VAS bill is to maintain local control by setting their own restrictions and guidelines for the VAS company. I believe, I know the answer to this, but my question is, if the company disagrees with Lockport's regulations, do they have the ability to bypass the legislature and appeal to the state for approval instead?
Yes.
Is that... Why don't we... So, my hope lost here is, why don't you take a firm stand in the beginning and put the proposal outright and fight back, because that's what local governments should do?
Yes.
I just have a question. Does anyone know whether or not this is associated with the electric car company that's built in Marshall by the board?
No, it's not. No.
No, you don't know, or no, it's not?
My name is Edgell. I'm a chairman president. I've been on the board here for, I think, almost 20 years. And I think it's fantastic to see this many people at a meeting. This is very unusual. And a lot of us sympathize with a few people. A lot of us are residents, and we still have jobs to do. But I haven't seen this many people since we tried to renew the assessment value in Lincoln. We have to do that. So, this is good to have you here. A lot of times, we have all kinds of ordinances that are sent in for us to take and make a judgment on. We do not reject those. We make recommendations back to that board, and we take for granted that's a public meeting, and those officials have a position and responsibility. So, I advise people to be aware of your environment, what's going on, and when there is a notice, pay some attention to it. A lot of this stuff comes through here. There's no representative of the village or the township or whatever. They just send paperwork to support review. So, there's no personality with it. So, I'm glad to see you people here taking part. Your government's at work, but you've got to work the government, too.
Jeff Agnew, 1870 South Fisher Lake Road. I had a talk with the local electrical inspector, and I asked him his input about this, kind of gave him a brief description. It's pretty sad that our local electrical inspector is not a paper for this as well. And he gave an example of, a little example of thermal running, right? So, you ever charge a phone, starts getting hot, right? Potentially, that's the same thing, right? And you see how quickly that phone heat up in that tiny little lithium battery. Imagine that to a large scale. And he provided me this example, because he actually talked about a data center and found a new car out that made local, I'm sorry, not local, national news, that they wanted to get power going, so power wasn't, permanent power wasn't stabilized yet, so they used generated power and cooled it, heating water. Well, they had a ground well, and it dried up so many wells of residential homes around the whole area. So, my thing is, it's like, okay, we're going to use city water, city's going to run out there, we're going to draw a lot of water. Maybe they need a backup. Maybe they do a retaining pond, is that a pull from the river? Is that a pull from the lake? Is it going to separate little fisher from big fisher? I mean, what's going to happen with our water there? And then the local residents, are we going to be forced to hook up the city water? So, that's my concerns with the new little bit of information that I'm looking for a local inspector.
So, I guess my question is, is it ultimately about the data centers, finding energy for the data center and the data? Would the data center... I can only talk about AI.
Yeah.
It's all data.
No, data centers are a whole different question.
Hi, I'm Lyda Baker, 568-5020. Yeah, we do have the product to grow from the Western Valley area. Anyway, I realize that you guys are devising this, and as I said, you also have a 30-day window to respond to the township. And so, we really don't have the ability to table this at this level, because you have to tell them if you're going to tell them anything, otherwise it's too late. And it gives a fresh set of eyes on something, and I've been involved with the township zoning and I was also on the planning commission, a one chemical. I work about the same, and I would tell anybody coming down, maybe teach them something. So, anyway, I think 1100 acres seems like a little bit much for inclusion in this overlay district. If the overlay district does, it's, I'm a very strict examiner, very well. Just add layers of language, okay? Approval, disapproval, or whatever, when you're looking at several kinds of zoning districts. Rejoining your zoning ordinance for each zoning district for an area, you're going to just use this overlay district to actually simplify things a little bit as far as the zoning goes. All right? And so, that's what that's about. If this doesn't, nobody comes along and buys, you know, sells any properties, there's no eminent domain option for this, from my understanding. And so, the government or whoever can actually keep the property. But if somebody wishes to sell to someone who's wanting to do a project that would be encompassed by the zoning and now with the overlay district, they would be able to do that. They didn't do it now, they could do it two weeks from now, they could do it 10 years from now. It is important, since the state has this goal of trying to produce enough, you know, a certain amount of renewable energy in some period of time, it makes sense to try and retain some local control. The problem is with our ordinance and Lockport, I believe it's more restrictive than what the state has laid out as expectations for the effort means, yet I don't believe a developer, they can just ignore Lockport Township, and they can go right to NPSC or whoever's doing this to get their approvals and the site plan stuff and all that stuff, directly from the state, to the chain. I don't feel like the location was well thought out at all, and the scope of it, I don't understand why it's so big. So, it made no sense to me at all, but I do appreciate that you guys are, you know, obviously taking this seriously, looking at it, thinking some homework about it, but you do have to make recommendations at this meeting. I would hope your recommendation would be to the Township Board to send this back to the planning commission and let them work on that for a while. But then to do something, because otherwise, we're going to lose that chance to be involved at all.
I don't know what you're saying. I won't put my mouth up to that. But the state of Michigan has an utterly rule of law of industrial property that is governed by dilapidated manufacturing, remnants of the rust belt. If this is such a green initiative, why are they not trying to repurpose that ground for these sort of uses versus going and taking agricultural land in the farm to try and wipe that clean and make that into an industrial eyesore in the middle of agricultural land? That's one. To me, if you really are about bringing initiatives, you really want to put up a lot of these sites where we don't have any vacuum anymore, and there's a lot in the state of Michigan, okay? Number two is, as a township, as a board, if you're suggesting making laws, this didn't happen to me, but it irritates me that someone would go on someone else's land and survey it without express written consent from the owner of that land. As a landlord, we have rights. We pay taxes to retain those rights and be good citizens, and no one should have been surveying anything without the express written consent of every single landlord. That's the subversive part that starts to feel really bad in this whole thing.
Hey, I'm Georgina Schaper, the Whateather. Not the Whateather. And I do have an environmental degree and hydrogeology background. And so, I have my little report here. So, there's very little information on the website for Lockport Township Planning Commission and the Township Board meetings. I think everybody that's looked at that knows that it's almost impossible to get any information from there. So, having pieced this together with Deb's research and other people's research, I can tell you, in April 2022, under new business, moratorium for solar was reviewed and discussed. And other than the 2019 Township Board meeting, where they mentioned a county before you guys, solar ordinance, there's nothing. So, 2022, so in July 2022, under new business, Doug presented a draft of the solar overlay district zoning ordinance and verbally updated the process. And it's unclear if he presented the solar overlay district map dated May 13, 2022, at that time, Doug?
They were given options.
Okay. On December 14, 2022, Patrick Hudson, our regional planner, in his report to the county planning commission stated that on October 22, the Lockport Planning Commission, after a public hearing, recommended a series of text and map amendments to accommodate solar energy systems. There is no record found as to what these amendments were, especially the map. It's unfortunate that our regional planner did not receive the map for Lockport Township, as he told me, for the 2023-01 solar overlay district ordinance, prior to his recommendation of this document. If he received it, or perhaps requested the map, he might have realized two things. First, that any October 22, 2022, changes to said map were not done, because the map was still dated May 13, 2022. Secondly, that the description of the land in Section 4, Part B, that Mike had read, did not properly reflect the actual 1100-plus acre site in which it supposedly described. And since Mr. Hudson is here with his daughter Laura, I think they can tell you that that land is agricultural, it's used, there are parrot barns there, you switch with walled barns for potatoes. And let's face it, lithium batteries blow up, but potatoes don't. I'm not a planner, but it would seem rather common sense that one should have all pertinent information before them in order to make a fact-based decision. Speaking of common sense and planning, who actually did the planning for the solar overlay district map and both the 2024 Lockport Township master plan and the 2025 County master plan? There are contradictions and multiple problems throughout all three documents in how they relate to the actual areas they're describing. There are knowledgeable people in this group that would be willing to help this process. I need that. And truly, meaning no disrespect, I think Lockport Townships and its residents need this help. In addition to the extremely problematic solar overlay district map site, there are other examples on both the future land use maps, which demonstrate a lack of common sense planning. So, just selecting a site for multifamily housing on the old Three Rivers dump in the middle of a flood plain. It's unstable, too. As stated at the October 2, 2025, public hearing, that the township's overlay district was picked because it was the least populated area between two substations. However, on the same future land use plan map, the entire west half of the overlay districts as planned, and I use that term loosely, were tightly packed, single-family residential. Look on the maps, it's in your plans. This continues north to Park Township, to the Park Township lawn. Additionally, Park Township's future land use plan has determined that the area surrounding the entire Fisher Lake area should be high to medium density housing for urban to suburban So, so much for low population. Fast forward to the best mess located within the solar overlay district. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Lippi of mine. First of all, it is not clean, and it is not green. It's wreaking havoc, environmental and ecological havoc in many countries. There are huge carbon footprints associated with carbon mining that we can take years to offset. Where's the benefit there? Once here in the form of lithium-ion battery storage facilities, they are endangering everyone that's remotely close to one of them, because they are not safe. And after they're all used up or burned up, it's a type-one landfill, hazardous waste. Right, Eric?
No.
Yes, dear. Lockport Township was not forced to pick a site to prevent state overreach in both PAs 233 and 235 of 2023. They had three choices. First, allow the MPSC, the state, to handle it. Second, develop your own township ordinance, which they chose. That's what they've done. Third, adopt a compatible renewable energy ordinance of CREEO, which was the only thing, the only document that would prevent state overreach, and Lockport Township did not choose that. Back to the recent October 2 public hearing, the officials of the Lockport Township Planning Commission stated several times that if the township didn't pick a site, the state could put it in our backyard.
Sounds like our backyard already.
Yeah. But isn't that exactly what Lockport Township Planning Commission has done? Put it in all of our backyards? So, let's stop bickering and stand together as one community and tell the state, no. Well, a select group of all would like to say, this is not okay.
Anybody else?
Uh, I just want to say something. My name's Paige Willis. You all keep stating that there is nothing regarding your township online. Have any of you thought about what I do and go to meetings and record them so other people can watch them instead of relying on the minutes? I myself attend anywhere between eighteen and twenty-five meetings a month. Sometimes I am the only one in the audience. Like this meeting, I'm usually the only one sitting there. The road commission meetings, as Mr. Shaffer can tell you, I'm usually one of the only people there. You guys all want to get involved, which I commend. But maybe you guys should look into getting, like I do, I Facebook stream them. Maybe you all need to look into doing that. I'm just, that's one of the issues. You guys keep saying there's no transparency. This board, the road commission, county commissioners are one of the most transparent boards that we have. I understand you are all concerned about this. But this board will make their recommendation regarding what you guys said. But it ultimately falls on the township board and the township planning commission. If you guys don't like it, sign a petition, take it to it. You can get their ordinance overturned regarding that. That is all I have to say.
My name is Robin Murphy. I live at two one seven four zero Pinkfoot Road, which is in Park Township. I've been in St. Joe County for twenty-five years. That's kept on me. And I talk, I found out about this on Monday at noon. A friend sent me the notice for the Park Township. I reach out to some friends and business partners, this business alliances. And in the process of the next six hours, I talked to people from communities all over Southwest Michigan. From Ashmore to Madawan to Kelmazoo Township. And I'd like to challenge Representative Carr to help us join arms with the other communities because you specifically mentioned that the reason that it stopped at other places was because of the community, not because of the boards, not because of what's happening. How do we lock together with the other communities in our southwest Michigan area or even the entire state, why not think this? And voting, seeing the progression. How do we do that?